Welcome to the Hopkinton Planning Board meeting of January 27th. And we're going to start with a couple administrative items, the proposed town meeting articles. John?
So, we actually only have one town meeting article. The residential fire sprinklers is not something we would do through zoning. The expiration of permits is not something we would do through zoning and Legacy Farms Road North. I can explain later, but that's, there's not any action that we need to take on that. So it's really just the downtown corridor project assistance to businesses and it's changed to the sign by law.
Yep.
To allow for temporary signs in an extended period.
So it's one of the things that the, Zach is looking at to try and help downtown businesses while the Main Street Corridor project is underway.
Yes, so, so we looked over the whole signage, all the bylaws, there's several different bylaws related to signs. And so adding a paragraph to the temporary sign by law, which is 210-179, is what we're proposing. And it would be business access during construction in right of way. There were extensive discussions back and forth in the Zach about whether or not we make this very specific to the downtown corridor or not. And the, the conclusion was that by, by wording it a little bit more generally, we, you know, we won't get into the habit of putting in zoning bylaws that are temporary and then have, then have to be revoked or, or expire and then have to be just, you know, deleted and that sort of thing. So, we thought that was more appropriate. So, so this is the final wording, but thank you very much, John, for wordsmithing. Affected businesses shall be defined for the purposes of this section as business for which access could be reasonably restricted by the zoning enforcement officer to be blocked, hindered, or otherwise adversely affected due to nearby construction within the right of way. We wanted to make it very clear that it's not construction of, on a business that this, this is about, this is about public right of way construction. Each affected business may display up to four temporary signs or sandwich boards within 600 feet of the property line for the purpose of directing customers to parking, indicating hours of operation, or displaying messages such as open during construction or other special instructions. And temporary signs for affected businesses shall not be limited to the 30-day maximum duration as set forth within this section, but shall be allowed to remain in place until the business is no longer affected by the construction within the right of way as determined by the zoning enforcement officer. So the, the limit to up to four temporary signs, that was thinking that is basically, you know, in the four ordinal directions or, or, you know, say a business is right here and you're going to put one, two at the end of construction and then maybe three, four. But the business itself may determine that only two are needed or something like that, but we couldn't see any need possibly for more than four.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments? I appreciate this.
Yeah, I think it's a really good idea and I, it won't solve all their problems, but I think it would at least do what we can to help.
Absolutely. And we, we certainly did note and discuss a great deal that there are many things that need to be done to help the downtown businesses during the downtown corridor project, but this is the only one that was a zoning issue. So nothing else we could deal with in Zach.
So, go ahead.
I just have, and I also agree, I think this is a great initiative to do and I can't, I can't think of any of the situations where I don't think this should apply outside of the downtown corridor project. I mean, if the business is being affected by construction, then I think that's fair. My only question is, and I'm just thinking like, like how does this go wrong? And if there's a lot of businesses that all have a lot of signage out there, then at some point, does that become confusing or a problem? And I, I don't think we necessarily need to design it to solve every problem, but I guess what I'm just wondering is I wonder if there's a way, so, so the zone, if there's a way to give some discretion to the zoning enforcement officer or something like that? I'm just curious to get other people's thoughts. But I just, just some way to sort of, if it comes to a point where we have so many signs in one spot, that they have some way of having those signs work together or...
Or combine forces.
Combine or something like that. Because otherwise, we're just going to have, I mean, I just wonder if we're going to have, you know, a lot of sandwich boards stacked up, which isn't necessarily going to provide the clarity that the business owners have been looking for.
Yeah, I, I kind of thought about that too. I'm interested in the idea of maybe the zoning enforcement officer being able to help manage that, but I was sort of assuming that the businesses would be invested in maintaining the clarity too, hopefully.
That, that's one of the things that we talked about as well, is that hopefully the businesses will be neighborly about how it's done. There's also some wording higher up in that zoning article that talks about not, not obstructing other, not obstructing pedestrian traffic, but, and not obstructing other businesses. So that, you know, is part of the process of, you know, where you place these signs. But as much as we discussed it, we didn't feel like putting a lot of detail into this was the right way to handle it. And so maybe, maybe adding something about discretion, you know.
So, if I can jump in, I think the worst case scenario is, I think when we measured it at the meeting, the intersection of Main and, Alan blanking, Cedar.
Grove.
Cedar and Grove, that is basically 600 feet from Bill's Pizza. So you could theoretically get all of those businesses putting a sign at that intersection and they could theoretically put four signs at that intersection, but I just don't think that's going to happen. And I guess if it does, we can have the zoning enforcement officer take actions to maybe organize a little bit better because it doesn't, this doesn't say how they can display it or, you know, in what manner it's displayed. It's just they can put a temporary sign somewhere within 600 feet of their property line. And if you want to, you know, put a two-by-four on the side of a building and put all the signs there when there's too many, maybe that's the action we take. But I don't think this prohibits that from happening.
Should it be sent into the zoning enforcement officer for feedback in advance?
That's actually a really good idea.
And I hadn't thought of this, but I'll mention it to the historic district commission next time since part of the historic district is in the downtown corridor.
Okay. That'd be helpful as well. Yeah, so why don't we just at least get the zoning enforcement officers feedback and see where we might be going with it?
Sure.
But I really appreciate the idea. All right, do we have to vote to put this on the warrant?
Yes.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to put this on the warrant.
移到
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Do we need to vote the other ones? I'm sorry.
There are, there are no other.
The housekeeping, the residential, you started by saying all that.
Oh, yep, sorry. The housekeeping was something that we talked to town council and the town clerk actually does have the authority to make certain changes. So Connor is going to go through all the changes that we identified, make them that he, the ones that he can. And then after that, probably for next town meeting or if there's a special town meeting, we'll bring up a housekeeping article to clean up anything else that's left.
Okay.
The residential fire sprinklers are not something we can do through zoning, so we are, Zach is looking at how we can do that through the subdivision regs or general by law.
Okay.
And in the interest of, obviously, you know, the, the deadline of town meeting, it's not important, but we aren't, we're not going to let that slide for a year. We're going to bring it up to you and...
Oh, perfect. Okay.
Not too long.
Okay.
Some specific suggestions.
And then expiration of permits, that was just a topic that we discussed with Zach, but that's also general by law type things, not something that we need to do through zoning.
Yeah, okay.
And then the Legacy Farms North Road acceptance, the plan was submitted today.
Oh.
So we received it. We sent it to Beta to review, so I don't think Phil's had a chance to look at it yet, but...
Not today, yeah.
We'll get that going.
Great, that's, I appreciate the update. Okay. All right, has, have we had a chance to look at the draft annual report for 2019? Any comments? Somebody did a lovely job.
That was Kobe.
Appreciate Kobe. All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the, or to finalize the draft as our, as our annual report. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have one thing to add.
Sure.
One of the things I noticed that was missing was our initiated growth study committee meeting.
Oh.
And I'm not sure whether it's appropriate to put the coordinated community action for the north legacy farms for the bus stop issue. It was something to be dealt into, but it's not...
Say, say what you just said again. Coordinated?
Coordinated effort for north legacy bus stop issue.
I'm not opposed to adding that. This is my question.
For both study committee, we did submit our own annual report to the town meeting.
Okay, good. Okay. So we could just maybe, you know, note that we formed it?
That it was formed.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the deadline is now, right? For the...
Deadline is the 31st.
The 31st, okay. Deb, do you want to submit just a couple tiny edits?
Sure.
Okay. Is anybody, is everybody fine accepting it with those edits that are coming?
Yes.
Okay. So all those in favor of the edited draft report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Thanks, Deb. I'll entertain a motion on the minutes of December 16th, 2019.
I had some notes for that as well. I talked to Stephanie in the beginning of the meeting and I talked about one of the things that we didn't get information on was the, the trees that we were going to contribute because of the circumference of the, the trees that were offered were, were a lot smaller.
Yep.
We were going to compensate with nine or 10 different types of species that maybe were smaller girth, but would provide the screening that was necessary. And it was also offered that the family legacy rhododendrons from, like, from Weston Nurseries was going to be offered, which is a really beautiful broadleaf flowered bush that would greet people as they drive up Legacy North.
Okay.
So those were two things that didn't quite make it into the minutes.
Okay, all right. So you have those changes?
I'm going to talk to her after I get them.
Okay, perfect. And that was what, those were the only additions you had?
Well, yeah, yeah, for now.
Okay.
Yeah, there is one other thing that we had talked about for the board of health, but I'm going to talk to them and just make sure that we're, it's really not a planning board issue.
Okay. All right. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended by Deb for December 16th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So I will entertain a motion to, I should have done this first, open the public hearings, open the public hearings that are in front of us tonight.
So moved.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. I should note for, we are continuing Maspinock, we haven't taken the vote yet, but...
Correct, we are continuing Maspinock and Tennis Club.
And the Tennis Club. Does Maspinock have a decision deadline that also has to be extended?
They do. So he would like to continue to February 24th and the decision continued to March 10th.
Okay.
That is on the site plan and special permit amendment.
All right. And the, the Tennis Club?
They would also like to continue to the 24th.
And do they have a decision deadline or is it the 90 days?
They may, let me check.
Is there any way we could just, instead of having to keep extending these all the time, have a generic 30 days after a decision or after a, is there some way we, I'm not sure exactly how, but is there some way we can do that?
Build the process?
They need to, the planning board requests an extension of the decision.
Okay.
And they have to okay it.
Yeah.
So it's not, you can't, I don't think legally you can automatically continue a decision if a hearing is continued. If that makes any sense.
Okay. We're at the app, great.
Yep, no, 100%. So do we have a decision deadline?
Decision deadline, you say it was 90 days?
90 days, okay.
So no deadline.
All right. So if, if anybody is here for the Maspinock Woods continued public hearing or the 27 Lumber Street, the Hockenland Tennis Club public hearing, those are going to be continued just to let the public know and we're going to take that action next, but you don't have to stay unless you're desperate to. Okay. So I will entertain a motion to continue the, the continued public hearing on the Maspinock Woods to the February 24th meeting with the decision deadline of March 10th.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by, oh, yep, discussion?
Anytime there's a continuance, I'd like to know a reason. Like we, we put placeholders on our agenda.
Yeah.
What's the why are we continuing these?
So Maspinock has to go before Concom again. So they, they went before design review board, had some, the design review board had comments. They likely don't have to go before design review board again, but they may want to between now and then because they might change something. But they need to get changes from Concom first and they wanted to make sure that those changes don't affect the changes that they're getting before the planning board.
Okay.
So they don't want to come before planning board, then go before Concom, change it, and then come back before planning board.
Okay, that makes sense. And the Tennis Club?
So they are still in that appeal process for the sprinklers and the air structures.
Okay.
And I believe they are set for their hearing appeal sometime in February. Do you know when, Chief?
Yeah, there's a tentative scheduled to, so...
So they think that the 24th, moving it to the 24th would give them enough time to go through that appeal process, have an answer, and then basically be able to finish their planning board process.
All right, thank you.
And, I'm sorry, through the chair. It would also be really nice to be able to know this ahead of the meeting. I mean, I understand that that makes the agenda, but sometimes, you know, we get the materials, we review the materials, and then we find out in the day of the meeting that it's continued. Do we ever get advance notice?
So...
I know state law, you know, they probably have until the day of, but...
So I, I mean, I can email you all the continuation requests, but if I get it by Thursday, I try and put it in the memo.
Yeah.
Sometimes I'm getting these things Friday afternoon and Monday morning, so...
Yeah.
I mean, I could email you.
Yeah.
I think that would be good.
Yeah, that would be, that would actually...
Avoid entries.
I found that early.
It won't save us, it won't all, you know, because a lot of times we do work on the weekend, but, but, you know, so if they cancel on Monday, it doesn't help us, but...
If you're a procrastinator, like...
Yeah, then it helps.
Whenever I get the email, or if I get an email, I usually put it in that folder, so...
Okay.
Not that I'm asking you to do more, but it usually should be the newest file in that folder.
If it goes in the folder, yeah, we don't know if it goes in the folder, yeah, it won't help us.
Right.
So...
So through the chair, question about what's on the table right now, the Maspinock Woods?
Yes. It is the Maspinock Woods right now to, to continue to the 24th with the decision for March 10th.
Sorry, I phrased that wrong. I just wanted to ask one more question.
Yeah.
Is that related to the house that's up front?
Yes.
Okay. So all, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on 27 Lumber Street, the Hopkinton Tennis Club, to February 24th.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
One administrative thing is possible. This is about the April meetings, I just wanted to bring it up in advance. E-HOP hosts a Know Your Vote show one week prior to town meeting, which would be April 27th, which is a day we have scheduled for a planning board meeting. So if we don't have any hearings for that day, I didn't know if we might be able to shift our schedules depending on, or we could consider that? Like maybe meet March 30th and April 13th instead of, right now, we're meeting April 13th and April 27th.
And when in March?
Well, March, there's five Mondays in March, so the 30th.
Would be the 3rd if we did.
The 3rd, yeah.
Okay. Let's just at least keep it in mind to try and stay away from it. Amy and I had talked back and forth, worst case, we'd have you do the meeting and, and I'd go to E-HOP.
And E-HOP will be willing to cover the zoning articles first so that you could be there for that part of the meeting.
Through the chair, just one, one point of clarification, there is a planning board meeting scheduled for the 25th, the 23rd of March. So it would be 23rd and then 30th.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. So what are the dates in March?
So March, planning board is scheduled for the 9th and the 23rd.
Okay.
Okay.
23rd. And then if we, if we were starting, so one of the things that does happen that we all remember is that we start backing up a little bit as we get towards election season, applicants have a certain sense of urgency for all the right reasons to get done. But if we can sort of keep it in mind to either potentially have the 30th as an option or, or be a little...
Or the 6th.
Yeah, I was going to suggest the 6th and the 20th. That would just move both the April dates up one week.
When is school vacation?
The 20th.
Ah, right.
Yeah. So that's the, that's the rub in, in April. I'm around, but I don't, well, at least I think I'm around.
Monday is a holiday. Monday is a holiday.
Oh, it's, it's...
Monday is the 6th.
It's a miracle day.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. I guess we can't beat up there Monday.
Yeah. Okay. So let's just at least keep it in mind and maybe just put a note on the, the 27th to avoid it if we can. And then we'll just, you know, manage the logistics as we go. Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Petrosi.
Good to be back.
Good to see you.
Yeah, over here.
This event is sitting here.
Ah, yeah.
Do you mind if I speak from the mic?
I don't. That's fine. Works fine. So if I understand correctly, you are meeting with us preliminarily on a proposed change?
Yeah, I wanted to give the board an update on what's happening.
Okay.
Since the last time we were here. You know, this is on the plan, now, this is Buckland in front of the board, which the board had, at least voted some of the ways that we had requested. But during the subsequent weeks, we engaged in several conversations with the town and the neighbors and the mothers and the conservation commission particularly, to come up with a mutually agreeable type of plan that is satisfactory to everybody concerned. So essentially, what we've, what seems to be the predominant agreeable solution to solving an existing drainage problem in the neighborhood, the two neighborhoods down at the end, would be for us to agree to abandon Buckland Street as its use as a right of way and develop three lots with access from Lemon Street, which is also a private way. And in, in connection with all of that, there's an existing drainage that comes onto this property that we're very concerned about. And what we're doing is creating a drainage easement via this Rutland area, tucked down to the, the Pleasant Street drainage system. And we're in the process of providing drainage calculations and that sort of thing to make sure it's compatible with stormwater management regulations. This plan assumes to have the support of the DPW and we met with the conservation commission last week and they seem to feel this is a positive improvement over what we were proposing. The issue for this board would be, this would be an A&R plan that we would be submitting to, to the board for its endorsement sometime in the process. What I've suggested to John was that we continue the two existing hearings that were ongoing, the stormwater management and the petition for 60 days till we have the blessings of the conservation commission, which is going to go back to that on February 25th. So, and in the meantime, we would prepare some, like a progress print of our A&R plan that we would submit so that town council would have a chance to, to look at it. And I know at one time, we did have an A&R plan that was submitted and they had concerns about the representations of how Buckland Street would be either abandoned or shown on the plan. So that's essentially what we're proposing. Utilities for sewer and water, this would become a utility easement instead of a roadway. The utilities will be underground. Water and sewer would be extended and serviced to three homes. Other than that, there won't be any, really essentially, this becomes the backyards of the proposed homes. That's where we're headed. And I wanted to just brief the board on where we're going and whether or not there's any other issues that we should be taking into account in this process.
John?
So we had a, a meeting with a bunch of town staff and Concom wanted one lot, Mr. Petrosi wanted five lots, so they kind of met in the middle at three. I don't know if Concom is agreeable to that, but I think it's progress. I think it simplifies the planning board process because it would be an A&R rather than the, the creation of Buckland.
Uh huh.
And then it would still likely require a stormwater management permit because I believe more than a acre would be disturbed, so...
Yeah, I'm not sure on the regulator if, if the conservation commission approved it. I don't know if that eliminates the requirement for stormwater management permit.
I don't believe so.
I thought I read something like that.
I'd have to look again, but I don't believe that's, that's the case.
Whatever it is, we just amend the application that's pending in front of the board with this plan and new stormwater calculations. And we're pretty fairly confident that we will conform to the stormwater management regulations that we've got in place.
Phil, did you have anything? This is just preliminary.
Yeah, it's really, it's mainly a process.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure whether or not the DPW is going to handle this in solid or in-house. It seemed to me that that's, I'll have to review the drainage calculations to make it work and I'll see if it works.
All right. Anybody have any comments or thoughts?
Through the chair, I did have one comment and it's probably not feasible, but just trying to find a way to not discuss a plan that's probably not going to go into effect. So it's, it's just that the Concom can't see your, your plan earlier because of their schedule or...
Oh, no. Well, we need the time to, you know, prepare. Everybody's busy and we'd like to get the plan to the DPW first, have them review it, and then submit, make a formal submission to the Concom. And hopefully that gets to them a week before their meeting so they've got a chance to look at it. So it's just a chain of, chain of events that have to take place.
So any, any members of the public are here on this hearing?
Through the chair, I just have one, one question. Is that, so the utility easement, would that be a new easement or is that, I don't recall there being an existing easement there, but...
We'd, we'd be creating, you know, we have an agreement, whatever we're proposing, we have an agreement between the parties to establish this as a utility, kind of as a right of way. As you know, through the hearing process, there was a concern about putting a roadway between two existing houses. This is one way that we will be supporting for that process. And their concern was they have traffic and other things driving by. So this would become an utility easement and probably gets extended a little further to take care of the, you know, what's needed for extending utilities to the houses. But it's usually going to be a right utility.
But that would be new and negotiating with the property owners?
Yeah, that's, that's all.
Did you have any questions or comments?
I wasn't sure. I can't see what the question is. When you were talking about utilities. You were talking about the utilities, I wasn't sure.
Ma'am, you have to, you actually have to come up to, that's all right. And introduce yourself, please.
My name is Rosette, Rosie Saunders. I live, I own the property at the end of Maple Street Extension. So I was just in question as to what you were pointing to when you talked about the utilities for these three houses. Was it along the Buckland Street?
Utilities will come up in the, the location of Buckland Street.
Underground.
Extended period.
Underground, correct?
Underground, yeah.
Okay. I wasn't sure if you were talking about Leonard Street. Okay. That's all I needed to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I had a couple of questions. What is, what are the lot sizes, street frontage?
Well, the zoning district calls for a hundred foot of frontage and fifteen thousand square feet with public water. These lots will be probably twenty to twenty-five thousand square feet with a hundred feet of frontage on Leonard Street. This lot here in the end will be an oversized lot. We really only need to, just about two hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage, access to frontage on Leonard Street that will be paved, a paved surface with country drainage proposed.
Through the chair, to Rob's point, that lot line would have to be redrawn, correct?
This lot line? These may, you know, we have to run this by building a special permit. There is a requirement that you have to have a square within.
Through the chair.
When this plan was drawn, we weren't aware of it, but we think it complies. So there may be a little bit of shifting of the lot lines depending on what we propose.
I'm still not clear, because is that a fourth lot right next to you?
It's right here?
Yes.
This becomes one lot right here.
So that's what I'm saying, that's not really the lot.
Not a lot.
Right, correct.
Erosion control.
So how would that?
This would be one lodge.
That makes sense. Thank you.
You know, we may kind of portion it a little differently, but the objective is to access this lot through the upland rather than filling mountains. And that's really kind of what's driving that particular shape of the lot.
All right. So the action in front of us is to continue the two public hearings that you are hoping this plan will supersede.
And the decisions.
And the decision, yes. So sixty days, what's the meeting date we're aiming at?
That would be March, maybe say twenty-third?
March twenty-third, and the decision March thirtieth? Does that make sense? Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to extend the stormwater management permit and the petition to construct a paper street for Wall Street development to March twenty-third, and the decisions necessary to March, the one is, the stormwater is that ten days too? Are they both like certain, or either of them ninety days? I'm sorry.
No, neither of them are.
They're both a decision, okay. And both decisions to March thirtieth?
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to ask one more question.
Sure.
That's okay. So when you came before us quite a while ago, we had suggested to go out through Leonard Street, and you said there was concerns with getting it by the Concom. So did that change because you went from four houses to three houses, or?
No, I'd say there was a combination of factors that affected that change. An ongoing litigation, we got some drainage that's on the property that's, and there was a density question that is, that was an issue. You know, as you may recall, when we first started this, we had five lots on the property. And we eliminated one to have a lodge detention basin. The combination of measuring disturbances and effective concerns of the Conservation Commission about being in the buffer, outside the buffer. I think it's been a cooperative effort to find a solution.
Great, thanks. That's what I was going to comment, compliment you on working with all the boards and the neighbors to get a solution, so.
Working on my three-year anniversary, so.
All right, you don't get any points for being a quick study, but you get some determination points. How about that?
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay. So we're all, did we vote that?
No, we didn't vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. March twenty-third and March thirtieth is the decision.
If it's okay, you submit like a draft of an A and R plan to John.
We're always happy for you to use the staff available to be at Town Hall.
Thank you very much.
One percent. Okay. And so now we have the new public hearing on the solar special permit, stormwater management permit for seventy-one Franklin Road, Seaboard Solar. Good evening. I would like you to introduce yourselves and then introduce your project.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Adam Costa. I'm an attorney with the firm of Mead, Tallerman &amp; Costa, offices in Newburyport and Millis, Massachusetts. With me this evening is Pedro Rodriguez with Seaboard Solar, the applicant for a special permit and a stormwater permit from your board tonight. Also with me is Nick Fassendola with Level Design Group, the engineer on the project. And he's here tonight to explain to you the proposal. So as I indicated, and as your public hearing notice indicated, we're before you seeking a special permit and a stormwater permit, both for this ground-mounted photovoltaic installation at seventy-one Franklin Road. What we thought we'd do tonight, unless you have a different preference, Madam Chair, would be to briefly present to you the project and the project plans, take any questions that the board might have. We have had an opportunity to review this, I guess there were the staff comments that are included in the packages that go out to your board in advance of the public hearing. We only reviewed those this morning. Don't know how long ago they went up, but we discovered them this morning. So I think we're prepared to address maybe some of the comments and concerns that were raised in that staff report, but we may not be prepared to address all of them tonight. But we certainly recognize that this is an ongoing process, and we'll be happy to address any comments that we can't address tonight at a further session of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Want to present the plans? So for the record, Nick Fassendola, Level Design Group, we prepared the site plans which are submitted, and the special permit application package, and the stormwater management permit package. So we'll start off with a brief description of the existing site. This board is now on the overhead screen. I do also have some reduced size copies if anybody would like a reduced size.
I would not mind that, because it's very hard for me to have it behind the screen.
We need a little TV right in front of there.
I know, I said that.
They're lower.
TV, but then I won't be able to see anybody out there.
So the site's located at seventy-one Franklin Road in Hockington. It's located in the northeast corner of the town, across the street. It's located in this area right through here. And then we have the Town of Ashland and Hockington Town Line, which runs through this portion of the site up through here. So we were back in front of the board about a month and a half ago for an A and R plan. What that A and R plan did was divide the existing eighty-six point four acre parcel into three parcels. So we divided off the land in Ashland into its own separate parcel. It's about one point eight four acres. We divided the, a separate parcel out of approximately fifteen point eight acres around the existing former Liberty Mutual Test Track site. There's an existing seventy-seven thousand square foot building on that property, parking, stormwater management facility, separate system. So it's a completely developed site in that area. And that leaves us with approximately sixty-nine acres located in this general area up through here. So what we're proposing is a five-megawatt DC ground-mounted solar site on that sixty-nine acre parcel. The property line is going to essentially start down in this area right through here, and we'll be using this existing driveway as our access to the solar site. So this existing driveway right through this area is located on our, on the solar parcel, which we call Block One. That will remain intact. We're not proposing modifications to that driveway. So we're going to come up from access to the site, it'll be from Franklin Road, up the existing driveway, and we'll turn left into the site. Currently, there's a large paved area, which is part of the former test track. We'll be citing panels in this area. But we're also proposing to remove approximately twelve thousand square feet of that pavement, which is located in the buffer zone in this area. Our current proposal is to keep about three-quarters of that paved area, but we're in discussions with Conservation right now. We had our first meeting with them last week, and there was some discussion about removing some additional pavement, which we're going to be looking into to see if it's feasible.
When do you see that again?
We've been continuing to, I believe the last meeting in February. So we have some comments to address with them. They asked for additional resource area flagging of this ponded area up through here. It was a brief history for Conservation purposes for the site. A few months back, we filed a resource area delineation request with Conservation, and we received an order of resource area delineation, which essentially locked down these wetlands located on this plant. So we have a vegetated, bordering vegetated wetland located in this area. There's a thirty-six inch culvert which goes under the existing driveway, which connects this wetland to this wetland all through here. This wetland system borders on this existing unnamed pond. Then we have a small isolated wetland right through here, and we have another isolated wetland in this area. This section through here is an intermittent stream which directs surface drainage towards this existing wetland. So those are the delineated on-site resource areas which were approved via our order of resource area delineation, which we received in November. So based on those delineations, we developed the proposed solar panel layout with the goal to obtain a system with a capacity of five megawatts DC, which is what you have here today. I described the site access as coming off of Franklin Road. We're going to be coming in through here, and after we're off the paved area, we have a proposed twenty-foot wide gravel access driveway, which essentially goes around the entire array all the way down through here until it hits the existing paved portion of the former test track in this area. So the site has located, it's not located in the environmentally critical areas, so it's not in an AC/EC, it's not, there's no natural heritage or dangerous species or prior habitats on the site. There are no FEMA flood zones on the site. There's no surface water protection areas as defined by DDP. There's Zone A, Zone B, Zone C. There's no interim wellhead protection areas as far as Zone One and Zone Two goes. And we do have, this line right through here is the Water Resource Protection Overlay District line as part of the Towns Overlay District. So everything south of this line is within, is within the WP, WRPOD-1 overlay district. As far as disturbance in that area, we're not proposing any new impervious coverage within that zone. We're actually proposing to remove impervious coverage from this existing test track area. So to this point in time, there's been no special permit filed for the work within that overlay district. So stormwater management for the proposed project, we have five separate stormwater basins. These are shown in these little purple hatched areas up through here. We have one basin here, second basin here, third smaller basin here, a fourth basin here, and a fifth basin here. They're all proposed to be infiltration bases to mitigate peak flow increases from the proposed land clearing and to promote groundwater recharge to the maximum extent practical on this site. The site also contains a thirty-foot wide gas pipeline easement that's currently owned by EverSource. I'm sure everyone's familiar with that, so we have this gas pipeline which is traveling through this area. I know EverSource has recently done permitting work to upgrade that pipeline. I believe that project's currently on hold for some Conservation issues that we heard about at the Conservation meeting due to denial from the Town of Ashland. So it will likely happen, but we don't know the timeline of the proposed work. We have reached out to EverSource representatives to discuss our project and to discuss their timeframe and construction schedule for the upgrade of the pipeline. Total land disturbance associated with the project, so this includes tree, the majority of this is going to be tree clearing. There's some site grading in the areas of the proposed retention basins, infiltration basins, and for the proposed access driveway. But the majority of the site disturbance within this area is strictly going to be clearing the trees and pulling up stumps. There's going to be no major grading activities within the center of the array. The panels will sit on a racking system. It's going to have four contacts with the ground, typically a screw-style racking system. And those can be adjusted to negotiate various terrain and grade differences in natural slope. So there's no real reason to do any major site grading to really level off the site to install this type of racking system. That pretty much covers broad overview of the project. So along with the twenty-eight acre site disturbance, it's going to leave about sixty-one acres of undisturbed, excuse me, forty-one acres, of undisturbed open space. So the applicant, you know, is committed to providing as large of a contiguous open space parcel to remain as open space in perpetuity. So what we have here, this large portion of the property, is the applicant's goal to remain as open space. They've been in conversations with members of Halt in town, Hockington Land Trust, on how this parcel can be utilized by them. They do have some existing trails which dip into the parcel with no associated easements on those. So we're looking to, you know, clear that up legally so they can have legal access to those trails and possibly incorporate additional open space, you know, throughout the pond area. And that concludes my brief presentation of the project overview.
Do you know how many trails we're talking about?
Hey, Rob, would you like to address that right there?
Madam Chair, so I understand that there was a fairly lengthy discussion at the recent Conservation Commission meeting about public access to the site, the existing trails, what will come of those trails in the future. So Pedro can speak to that because he was at that meeting.
Pedro Rodriguez from Seaboard Solar. So I've been communicating with the Hockington Land Trust. They sent a letter to our company a few weeks ago after we submitted the application. While we were surveying the property, we noticed that there were a few trails in the entire property, and that we are looking to preserve. It was our understanding that Halt was the party entitled of the maintenance of these trails, but that was not the case. There's only one portion of the trail to the north of the solar array that is maintained by Halt. That, like Adam said, there's no easements, there's no entitlement by Liberty Mutual. And Liberty Mutual also got this letter, and they were surprised by the amount of trails that were created by some of the neighbors in the property. Again, we're not here to destroy this trail. Again, we're not here to destroy this trail. We're actually trying to preserve it. And one of the things that we're going to be meeting with Halt this week is to how to best rearrange the solar array to preserve some of these trails. We're going to be looking to allocate the entire leftover property into an open space and the other trails into a conservation restriction. That way, Halt can maintain them. There's not going to be more hunting tents in the property. That way, the public and the neighbors can have legal, public access to our property and there's no issue with liabilities, any of that. And we're talking about the open space of the leftover land of the solar array and the leftover land of the building. As you guys probably know, the Liberty Mutual building was on the market. We made an offer to purchase it. We're going to be closing on the property soon. There were other developers interested in the property, and from what I know, they were looking to do a development law more drastic than what we're doing right now. I understand that we're going to be disturbing over 20 acres, but we're also going to be disturbing, we're going to be allocating more than that into open space. And I hope to talk to the neighbors today, how to allocate planting, how to properly do the trails. Again, this is just the first design of the array and we're going to be looking to rearrange it. Thank you.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? I appreciate, the northern part that's in red is currently maintained by Halt?
Correct.
And what you were saying is that you're looking to preserve all of the trails?
Most of the trails, correct.
Okay.
Through the check, can I make a comment about the trails?
Yeah.
So yes, I'm also a member of the Trails Committee, which is a public board, Halt being a private company. So I think it would be important if you guys could work with that board, that committee as well for the trails.
Of course.
Thank you.
If I could ask through you, Mr., Madam Chair, so is that, is that a committee that meets regularly in the town? Is it a?
Every two weeks.
Okay.
Tuesday nights.
Okay. So we'd be welcome to attend one of those meetings?
Yes, I can get you on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Hold on. Can I go to John next? For just the overview.
Did you want to ask a question?
Yeah, in a minute though.
My overview might be a little long.
Yeah, that's okay. We're going to get to questions, yeah.
All right. So reviewed the plans, and I just want to note, there were two letters received from general public, one from Halt and one from Ann Karnofsky. So those were in your files. I won't read them aloud, but they were in the files. So there was a couple of comments that I had for the developer and the applicant, just more compliance with zoning type of things to begin with. So calculation for lot coverage for both the A and P districts separately, just so we know what that is, because there is a requirement for lot coverage maximum, and it's different for each district. There is a portion of the upper area, and let's see if I can bring up the plan, that doesn't appear to meet the setbacks. That's not going to be super clear. It's over here. So this says 98.7 feet. It says that this is the professional office, but it actually is co-terminus here. So this is a district. And within the professional office, it's supposed to be 100 feet rear yard to an abutting residential district. So close, but not quite there. So that should be 100 feet. And then I was requesting some visual depictions from the view from Fawn Ridge and Franklin Street, just to see how the, those different areas would view the solar through the trees, provide evidence of an agreement with EverSource to perform work within the easement on site. And then there, the detail of the fence did not show a raising of the bottom of the fence six inches to allow for wildlife. That's generally kind of how it's done, so that would be something I'd recommend. And then the Ernst Solar Farm seed mix, I have to confess, I did not look into this to see what was in it. But one of the things that I would recommend is looking for pollinator-friendly species, and that may be included in this. I'm not 100% on that. The other question I had is if the seeds and the species that are in that mix would flower or otherwise bloom at lower than 12 inches, because you guys said that you would be cutting that at 12 inches. And so if you're cutting it and there's nothing blooming, then it's kind of just stems. So it wouldn't really be effective. So that's something I would be concerned about. And I believe that was all of my comments that weren't covered by VADA.
Madam Chair, if I may, so we saw those comments, as I indicated at the start of the presentation just earlier today. We will certainly revise the plans to address those comments. We recognized the 98.7 foot setback as opposed to 100 foot setback. We had measured it to the array as opposed to the fencing, but I agree, it needs to be modified so we can make that, make that fix easy enough. We can also adjust some of the other particulars with respect to the bottom of the fence being raised. We can, we can provide a spec sheet for the Ernst Solar Farm seed mix to provide some particulars. And if there's a preference that the principal planner would, would like to make known to us, we can certainly accommodate. So we're happy to address those concerns or those comments between now and the next meeting, for sure.
So we would typically ask our engineer to come forward now if he can give us a, share the space. Can you find that? Okay.
So for the record, my name is Phil Parides. I'm with VADA Group. First, I just want to take a minute to thank the board for choosing us again to be your consultant. Appreciate the vote of confidence. If and when there's any issue relative to can we provide better service for you, feel free to speak with me directly or with John. I'd like to make sure that we can keep this relationship going. But again, thank you for choosing us. So we had the opportunity to review the plan, and we provided a letter, dated January 7th. As with a lot of these projects, there are a number of issues that are maybe just paperwork or just kind of just little fine details. I'm not going to go through every one in great detail, but I just wanted to hit the items that may or may not impact the project itself. So the first one is Z3. We just want to make sure that they have the 75-foot buffer zone on this side of the project. SW9 is related to the soils. And as you know, the Legacy Farms Northwest Villages is under construction. We've had some, some issues relative to erosion and poor soils generally in that area. And so I know this is, it shows up on the Natural Conservation Service maps as B soils, but we don't know exactly where that transition has taken place. And so we just want to make sure that it's not going to, we're not going to be in that poor soil again. And we just want to make sure that the design accommodates any issues relative to that, especially since it's adjacent to wetland areas. So we would, I think we just got to do a little bit of poking around, make sure that the soils are as they're mapped. So also, as we had, we had a chance to review the Northwest Villages, and we note that the general flow pattern from that is from west to east. There is a detention basin right here, which outlets in this general direction. But there's also some overland flow that comes across here. And I know that the applicant has obtained an ORAD for the project, meaning that the wetlands on their site are reviewed and approved by the Conservation Commission. However, their wetlands on their site don't match the wetlands on this site. Plus, there is some additional flow that comes to these that hasn't been accommodated in the analysis. So we just want to make sure that that is, as well as, again, I'll come back to the wetland issue in a minute. SW27, again, soil tests in infiltration basins are required, so we would anticipate seeing those. So I don't recall, again, it was quite a while ago when we did this review, the width of the road seems excessive to us. And talking with the fire chief, we just think that may be an opportunity to reduce the width and therefore reduce the impact relative to stormwater. Maybe just consider that. But I would just definitely run up by the fire department. And there seem to be a few places where there may be washout relative to concentrated flow. And in general, we'd like to see some sort of protection of, and kind of either a berm or swale that would protect the natural areas from any washout of the dry gravel road. But I think there's also some points where it's concentrated that we want to make sure that it isn't an erosion problem. Again, if we find that the soils are similar to the ones in the Northwest Villages, we don't want to have additional erosion controls. We'd like to see additional protection of soils. I understand that the, there's not going to be much grading, so there will be some topsoil that's left, but there will be the seeding and making sure that there is enough topsoil to hold the grass there. So we'd like to see just a little more detail or operation maintenance for that. Yeah, and then, and then just the resource area, there may be some wetland resources along this edge that may be with 100 feet of the property. So I just want to make sure that that's confirmed. Again, the wetlands on site, the property are confirmed already. Any questions, any other comments that I have?
Any questions at this point for Phil? Yeah.
Questions and comments, but first of all, I want to thank John for bringing up the fact of raising the fence six to or more to provide for natural wildlife and the pollinator plants and shrubbery, if there's, there's that ability to do that. And I actually live in the area, just, you know, just being forward, and have hiked and ridden these trails for many, many years, even before Legacy Farms. And when we worked with Legacy Farms North, previously was South, and we learned a lot. And then we went to the Legacy Farms North. And we worked hard to provide for contiguity and continuity trails, because the trails aren't any good if they're dead-end trails. So I don't know, this was a really cool map that Halt provided, and it shows a lot of the trails that are going to, that are existing there now. And a lot of them are going to be wiped out. It would be nice if we could recreate a trail around the premises. I don't know what your guidelines are or your security, but it would be nice to have a contiguous trail around the property. And it would be even greater if we could tie it into Legacy Farms North, because that's what we fought for so hard before.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
This is typically when we add to the agenda, can we put a discussion, a more detailed discussion of trails?
Okay, sure.
On, on the agenda? I was just looking to see if we had it already. But let's, let's do that. Let's add it to the discussion specifically, okay? Because then we can, it'll be lucky 5.13, how about that? And that also gives folks a chance, these folks have a chance to go to the trust.
Yeah, I just thought it might be worth providing a quick overview, because I think there's a lot of new people here to the, to the process, so.
Yes. Yeah, go right ahead.
So in a nutshell, just so that people have the right expectations here, this will most likely be a multi-night hearing. There is, we're just going through the preliminary parts of it now. The, we will have more detailed discussions as defined by the public hearing outline. So we're not going to try to get into every detail of this tonight, and we actually want to avoid some of these detailed discussions until we get to that, just so we have some, some structure to make sure that we hit on all the things that matter to folks. So, because I know there's some new people out there. I don't know if there's anything else to add from a process perspective, but.
No, just, just specific. Oh, we often do a sidewalk, yes. So there you go. At this point in the agenda, we open it up for planning board members and members of the public to actually add to the more detailed agenda topics. Not so much discuss every agenda topic in detail, but to make sure that if you have specific concerns, that they are included in the conversation that we're going to have. And yes, we do do, we usually do a sidewalk. I didn't see the sidewalk. So let's, how about we talk about that now? Can we do that?
Add that.
Right now? Let's do it. What's everybody's schedules look like? We very often do them Saturday morning. We happen to very often gravitate towards 9:00 AM.
Especially during 9:00 is good.
Okay.
Not at 8:00.
Not at 8:00? Do you have some availability in the next couple of Saturdays we can contemplate? I cannot do this Saturday.
I can't do the 8th.
15th?
It's a holiday weekend.
Oh, I can't, you know what? How about, I can't do the first. It's hard and fast, because I'm taking a licensing exam. But if everybody else is available on the first, you should go. Because I'm also away on the 15th.
First of what?
February.
This Saturday.
Saturday.
This Saturday.
Yeah. Who's available this Saturday at 9:00 AM? Are you, no? No? They're not available. You know what? We should have started with that. Sorry about that. Thousand sorrys. Okay. All right, here we go. The 8th?
15th is, that's the start of February school, February school vacation.
8. I can't.
Hold on, the 8th, we're starting with these guys. The 8th is possible?
So the 8th should be fine. Just a disclaimer, we don't own the site yet, so we obviously have to provide Liberty Mutual with notice and gain access. We don't anticipate that will be a problem for them. But at least with respect to those around this table, the 8th is fine.
Okay. How about around this table? I know I heard you cannot do the 8th.
I cannot do the 8th.
You can?
I can.
Yes.
Can't, okay. So I think we're going to have to, how about the, let me just ask, the 15th, I know it's the start of school vacation, that's, that's okay, the 15th? Okay, let me take another look around the table. Yes? No?
Yes.
No?
These people have got more notions on the 15th.
All right. I think, I think we're going to have, we're going to settle on the 8th. I think we had a better shot at the 8th. And I think that that's better for the public too. I think it's likelier that the public might be busy on the 15th as well. Where is a good point to meet for the sidewalk?
We can probably meet in front of the building, in the parking lot. In front of the building, in the parking lot.
Plenty of parking. Awesome. Doesn't always work, doesn't always work out that way. 9:00 AM on Saturday. So for the, for the public's benefit, we do a sidewalk, and it's an interactive sidewalk. There's a, there is a lot of discussion, but it is not the place to take or give or discuss in terms of the public hearing process, testimony. There's no, there's no commitments made on these sidewalks. Definitely, it's an opportunity, it's very helpful to see exactly what is proposed and where is proposed, and get a real sense of the site and the work that's going to happen, as well as what's around it. So just, it is, you know, it's posted for the planning board. We're out there, but we are not deliberating at those sidewalks. But the public is invited to attend and participate. It's usually a really nice opportunity to see what's happening.
9:00 AM, we said?
9:00 AM, February 8th. Okay. So I'll ask members of the planning board, are there anything, any items that you would like to specifically add to the agenda that aren't on the agenda? The public hearing outline, I mean. Okay.
Looking for screening.
Did we talk about natural resources and historic resources? I gave them on the other.
I'm looking. Natural resources and historic resources will be one. Screening, do we have screening?
Because we have stricter screening.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'm okay doing screenings separately, yes.
Because there's three, three different vantage points of this project.
Okay.
And the natural resources will cover tree clearing and minimizing tree clearing and things like that.
Anything else from the board? We are going to invite members of the public who have come, interested in speaking, I'm going to, it probably makes sense if you guys make some space for the public to come up. But just as a reminder, this is an opportunity to contemplate the areas that we're going to discuss, and we will discuss these areas in detail as we get to them, as we work through the outline. When you come forward to speak, anybody is welcome to come speak. Please introduce yourself and give us your address, and then just let us know what areas and particular topics in particular you want to make sure that we are going to discuss in this hearing process.
I thought of something. Is it included somewhere about impact on open space? Could you speak up? I'm sorry. Sorry. Is the impact on open spaces, they talked, I had just questions about it.
Yeah.
They talked about it, they're going to have different open space than they had before, and I didn't, wanted to learn more.
So we have impacts on, so let's just add open space rather than, that's a good idea.
Oh, okay, thank you. And I didn't know if it was preserved open space or just happens to be open at the moment.
Okay. Yes.
I'm Maury Gasser, 28 South Mill Street, President of Halt. First of all, I want to express my appreciation of Pedro for all the time he's been willing to, to talk to us, and I'm hopeful that we'll have the concessions we need to come up with a project we can accept. I do want to add to the discussion about trails, it's not just the trails themselves, but it's the environment around the trails. We don't want to be walking next to solar panels. We're looking for possibly screening, or just to have enough space between the trails and the panels so that people can have a woods experience, which they have today. So that should be on the agenda for the topic.
Thank you.
John Kohler, 72 Franklin Road. I just had a quick question, clarification on the access, as you're describing the access to this new property using the second entrance, what happens to the access to the building? Because the, there's two entrances, but the one is a one-way in. So if you're taking the second, the second egress away from that building, how does that get apportioned out? And I don't know whether that's going to be covered, because that's part of the building property versus this property. So I don't think you can have it both ways, so.
So, just to clarify, you have questions about access?
So they're, they're planning to use the second driveway for this new property.
Yeah.
But that's currently the only access, the only egress from the existing building.
Okay.
And that's the only building, that's the only egress that can be used for trucks.
5.6.
So I don't know how you're going to have that as a shared resource or.
It's actually 5.1, I think. So I just want to make it clear to you, thank you. We do, that question may or may not get answered tonight, but it is on the vehicular and pedestrian traffic flow and vehicle access.
But that's for this property as opposed to the property that's being separated out. So that's why I didn't know whether it was still.
We'll definitely talk about it. And I'll make a note that it's for the properties as they're separated, okay?
Thank you.
Yep.
Are you ready? Sorry about that.
No, that's all right.
Good evening, it's Bob Foster, 85 Franklin Road. I'd kind of like to go to the basic question of zoning. I haven't heard too much talk about the zoning here tonight, but I'm wondering, is this declared as a permitted use under our bylaw in this district? And if so, what use that's listed as a permitted use, do you see this application relating on? Because there was also a couple of mentions of special permits, and I'm not sure where the special permitting came into all of this, but I think to begin with, how, how do we see this as a permitted use?
So I'm going to defer to John to answer that. Was there another, was there a zoning question that we had too?
So the zoning question we had was for setbacks?
I know that one, there was not an additional zoning.
No, so solar isn't allowed use in every zoning district in town. It's in the solar bylaw, which, I forget what section it is. Article 31, yeah, Article 31 of the zoning bylaw, it says solar is a use permitted in every zoning district.
So is it overlay type?
It's not an overlay, it's just, that bylaw enables that use to be allowed in every district. It's not in the zone, I mean, we don't have a zoning table, but it's not in the, each individual zoning district has an allowed use, it's just a cover-all use allowed in the solar.
Part of the building permit process?
Uh, not necessarily building permit process, so they need to get a special permit to allow for solar, but it's, you're allowed to build solar in any zoning district, as long as you get a special permit.
So the special permit relates to what?
The use.
To that particular use?
Yeah, so that's what they're before the Planning Board for now, is the solar, solar special permit.
Yeah, well, that, that's, trying to clarify that with the bylaw is a little difficult.
It's in the solar bylaw, in the Article 30 of the zoning bylaw.
With the overlay district for water protection, is there a special permit that relates to that also?
So the Water Resources Protection Overlay District is overseen by the Zoning Board of Appeals, not the Planning Board. So depending on the criteria for that, they may need to get a special permit before the ZBA, but that doesn't come into play in this process, because the Planning Board has no authority over that.
Okay, well, I, I have a number of questions about more details about the construction and the finishing of the surface beneath this array and so on and so forth, but I gather you don't want to get into that kind of discussion tonight, so, because we could talk about that for quite a while, I suspect. For instance, how much earth moving is there going to be on the site? How much excavation? Because the Water Protection Overlay District requirement is that you can't get closer than four feet to the groundwater level. And much of this site, the groundwater is going to be less than four feet, I believe. And so the question is, how much earth moving is there going to be? How much cutting and filling? But perhaps you don't want to get into that tonight, I don't know.
Would that be rightly included in the stormwater management?
Doesn't sound like stormwater, it just sounds like round water level.
Round water level.
So with respect to the Water Resources Protection Overlay District, if they are triggering that permit, that will be heard by the ZBA. So again, Planning Board doesn't have authority over that. As far as I'm aware, that could be a stormwater issue, that could be a separate issue, that could be added to the, the discussion list. That's what I was just suggesting.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that that's a good idea, but how do we, at what point, what is our role in finding out or determining if there is a zoning issue? I mean, it.
What, I don't understand what the.
With the Water Resource Protection Overlay District, as we're talking about it, how do, where does it, where does that get clarified if there becomes a zoning issue?
So that is, if they're within that overlay district, and they trigger whatever the requirements are of that special permit, they need to apply for a special permit for the ZBA.
Yeah.
If they go for a building permit, and they haven't gotten that special permit, and it's determined by the zoning enforcement officer that they needed it, they would not be issued a building permit until they got that special permit.
Okay.
That's, that's part of my question, too.
Yeah.
Sort of overlapping priorities.
Is it the light blue line that is the Water Resource Protection Overlay District? Okay, so I think we should add a discussion point for earth removal and in consideration of the Water Resource Protection Overlay District, and somebody said, Phil said, the water, the wetlands resources that are just outside of the, the project? Does that make sense?
You got all that?
Yeah, I'm taking a note, I'm taking a note, I'm saying it, taking a note all at the same time. You know, you could take a note.
How about, is it okay if I just explain quickly on what John was saying about the districting for solar panels? I just wanted to make everyone aware that hopefully in this May Town Meeting, there will be an article for designating certain areas of the town for ground-mounted solar. So that's, it seems like something you'd be interested in.
Very much so. I'm interested to know how they're finishing off the surface of all these, obviously they're taking out trees and stumps and that sort of thing, but do they expect it to go back to brush, or do they intend to grass it? How is everything?
Yeah, that, we'll talk.
I might just be able to answer that right now.
Yeah.
So that's what we were talking about with the Ernst seeding mix and the pollinator-friendly seeding. So basically, once the land is disturbed, and then they put the solar panels on, they seed it and allow that to grow back. So there is some leeway as to what we could require in terms of seeding.
We've had an opportunity to see how it works on some of the other arrays in town. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks, Paul.
Sorry, I have one more question.
Yeah, hold on one second.
Is this a 61A property that the town has the right of first?
I don't believe so.
I think so, but I wondered about that, too. We should at least find out. Yes.
I'm Robert, I'm at 50 Franklin Road. I have a couple of questions that I would like to stream together. One is about the plan that I've seen today, I visited the planning office and saw some stuff, and it wasn't really clear where the boundaries of the tree removal actually will be. So I'm kind of curious to know, I would like to see something more definitive to show where the tree might be. My second question is that on those plans, I also saw something about battery installations at one point, and I'm wondering, what are the concerns there? Are there hazardous materials associated with the batteries? What are the plans for managing that and maintaining it and so forth? Also, a third issue is a question about the maintenance of the road and the arrays. I mean, for instance, in the wintertime, is there a lot of snow removal activity going to be happening there? Is there just treatment on the surfaces or anything like that? And would those things be potential pollutants or other concerns?
John, where would battery storage fit in, in our agenda? Utilities. Maybe utilities? Electricity, right? Could be utilities, or it could be a separate issue.
Would snow removal be planned during 5.1 or would it be a gold rush or traffic?
Snow removal is covered on 5.6.
Oh, snow storage, okay, thank you. Treatment of the road services, do we usually have a conversation on that?
Not generally, no.
I think that'd almost be part of the CONCON process, if there was, if they were using anything on the road?
CONCON would only have jurisdiction over areas of the road that are within the buffer zone.
Okay. And did we decide that batteries was under utility or a separate line item, battery storage?
I don't think we decided.
I'd rather have it as a separate one.
Okay.
Utilities, I think, are a little better, a little more defined, I'm not sure what's out there for batteries, for battery storage.
Utilities, usually with solar projects, we talk about the interconnection.
Yeah.
But not batteries.
Okay, yes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, good evening, Board Members. My name is Alex Levine, I'm an attorney, and I represent the Brick Hill Estates Homeowners Association. So they are on Fon Ridge Road, right here towards the northern part of Barcel. And just as an initial matter, the homeowners want to thank you. This is a really, really serious project, it's going to have a really huge impact to the area, and it is a lot of work, let's just put it that way. One of the homeowners was saying this really is a thankless job, but here's.
Might have been Deb, right?
Here is the thank you. And there's, it's very professionally well-done, thank you, guys. There's a lot of thought put into it, but there's no way around it, it's, it's going to cause a lot of destruction. To, to save the planet through renewable energies, it seems a little ironic to destroy a little portion of it, but that's, that's not really before the board. A couple of issues, and these may have already been covered, of things that we would like to continue the conversation and look, and look a little bit further into, is alternative arrangements of the solar configuration, and possibly a reduction of size and number of solar panels in order to increase setback areas that are along the northern portion, and to preserve some of the hall trails. I know there's one trail that comes right along through the northern portion. It's a trail that's utilized by the Brick Hill Estates homeowners, and possibly moving the array further south or reducing some of them could preserve a trail that a lot of, a lot of the neighbors and neighbors would enjoy and really, and really appreciate. I think this may have already been mentioned, but a further look into the environmental impact on the local wildlife as a result of the destruction of habitat, and then also a look into the environmental impact of the actual installments that are going to be put in there. What are the chemicals in the batteries? What are the chemicals and hazardous materials that are going to be in these solar arrays? I'm sure the information is out there, this isn't the first solar project that we've put in place, but just looking a little bit further into it to make sure that if the worst were to happen, what would be the plan to address that? And I think something that may be a little bit more for the Conservation Commission, but I think this board may have jurisdiction over into working coordination with them, is that the local wildlife, obviously there is going to be habitat destruction, but in terms of some of the more mobile animals, such as deer and predatory animals like coyotes, where are they going to go? As a result of the Legacy Farms development, a lot of the deer population moved into the Brick Hill Estates area and just destroyed a lot of shrubbery. And that, you know, obviously, it doesn't look good, and it takes a little bit more work, but it's quite costly. There's a real dollar value to, to a deer population moving from where they're used to eating, and that already occurred once with the Legacy Farms project, it's going to occur when all of this land is now deprived of their feeding habitat. Again, I'm sure there are answers to these questions, it just, it just may require a little bit more looking into. And, and the homeowners would like to thank you guys for, for doing a good job in, in raising the tough questions and doing the due diligence to get to the bottom of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm madly trying to make sure, what's that? Yeah, no, yeah, I just want to, as we speak to everybody, I want to make sure we capture it. I would not mind adding under 5.11 impacts on wildlife pathways and quarters and impact. And also, I know that we're going to keep it in mind, but I wouldn't mind having that pollinator planting as a typical.
I agree.
Item on the solar farms.
Fauna and flora.
There we go. Yes. Yes, sir.
Tom Robertson, 15 Fon Ridge Road, and I just wanted to underscore some of the things that were said here, particularly about the trails, the woods and wildlife homeowners. And one of the points that I wanted to bring up is that these, these wetland areas that they're talking about, and the trails that go throughout that area have hiked them all seasons at all different times. The fact is that they are, in fact, moist and doing the work of wetlands, whether or not they're actually moist today throughout the year after major storms, it's days afterwards where lots of the trails in the area is, is wet. So I think that the wetlands work is being done in a much broader area than what has been shown and diagrams that we've been given. And so my question is how diligent or accurate are those wetlands? One, designation is, two, the, the fact that the other areas around these wetlands are supported, supported by the wetlands, the animal, in our area with the Legacy Farms project to the, to the southwest, the southeast.
The fact is that they are, in fact, moist and doing the work of wetlands, whether or not they're actually moist today throughout the year after major storms, it's days afterwards where lots of the trails in the area is wet. So I think that the wetlands work is being done in a much broader area than what has been shown in diagrams that we've been given. So my question is how diligent or accurate are those wetlands? One, designation is, two, the fact that the other areas around these wetlands are supported, supported by the wetlands. The animal, in our area with the Legacy Farms project to the southwest, the southeast, the Ashland Summit Lane development, which is to the north, and now the contemplated list of forestation. It's a real, it's a unique case of small area having some major environmental destruction in the short period of time. And we're still reeling from the Legacy Farms as far as the, you might see we have a river that, work that's created after any storm, and we see that, you know, running the higher rates for longer periods of time during the winter thaw or a major summer storm. So that's a real concern to me that we look at not just, you know, this isolated piece of development to net the impact of these other developments put together. And just, one other thing on the hiking trails, the, we don't know where Liberty Mutual property starts and where it stops, but I know that the trails go crisscross throughout there and there's access for, in many different areas, from Franklin Street, Cross Street, from Fawn Ridge Road and from the, now the Legacy Farms area road. When that gets cut off, because of the solar farms, then the access, one access that will remain is going to be on Fawn Ridge Road or my cul-de-sac. I can just see the parking there on that road as being a consideration that is, now people have to drive to get to the trails versus being able to access them from their area. And I don't know if that's being considered at all, what the implications of that are. And the last thing I want to say is that we're very fond of the character of the, this area, part of town, and that we're very scared that that's going to change with this development. And we're very concerned with our property values. We look at our backyard and we don't want to be seeing a power plant through the trees or from our second story balcony, the overlooking of shiny river versus the forests into that. And the, so we're talking about setbacks and the delineation of what's, what are, and what that means. A question was raised in what it looks like from Fawn Ridge Road. Well, what it looks like from Fawn Ridge Road is our house, okay? But you look at what it looks like the back of our house is a different story.
Excuse me one second, yes. That just means the library is setting the alarms so we can continue to use the restaurants that are through that door, but not exit into the library through that door. We have to enter and exit through here from now on. So, so everybody listening to those alarms, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
So I'm just wondering what they, when you do your sidewalk, what it means as far as this, the view, the aesthetics, and how much of an impact that takes into place. I know that that's one of the reasons why I purchased this property, the reason I paid a premium for it, was because of its pristine nature of the, sitting up back here with life that is going to be certainly disturbed during the construction period.
So I might suggest on the sidewalk, too, that when we finish the sidewalk, that we drive up and make sure we see from your perspective as well. Okay?
I'll take you upstairs.
That is an offer I have not yet had. So no, we definitely want to see it from your perspective, though, sir. Okay? So I think that we will do that after, because it's a big piece of property, it's a big project, so we'll be at one point for the sidewalk, but then we, those of us who can will drive up and around to make sure we see it from your perspective.
Okay.
Okay?
And I listed these items, did I submit this to the public record for?
Yes, absolutely.
For the public?
Yeah, no, actually, it's a good reminder to the public. You're very welcome to attend meetings and have your say at meetings and so forth, but you are also very encouraged to put your comments in writing, and it becomes part of the application, the record for this hearing.
And that pond, the nameless pond, it has an influence. Well, I feel that we call it the duck pond.
The duck pond, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So we should add parking for trails under the?
I did, yes, I'm sorry. I did include access and parking. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Michael Manzo, 67 Franklin. When the gentleman was speaking about groundwater, I couldn't, we couldn't see where he was pointing, but this property here, we're very concerned with additional water coming in. We just can't have the, you know, we have the same concerns that everybody else has coming up here with the wildlife. Has there been any kind of consideration to how many trees are coming down? Just this whole area is being flat cut. It's just, the groundwater is our biggest concern. The property values are, I mean, that is going to remain to be seen. In addition to all the trees coming down, the areas that are going to be left alone have a lot of dead trees and vines. I mean, we would like to see that cleaned up and polished, the whole project, just so that it's better looking. Maybe even some additional planting that they could do around the border to kind of thicken up, you know, so that you don't see from the road and the neighboring properties. It's a huge project and it's definitely going to change our view. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Just one thought, if I may.
Oh, take your time, Bob.
I would recommend to the board members that if you have not visited one of these solar arrays, make a point to visit the one right off of East Main Street. You will see there what we're talking about. I know that the board isn't going to do that officially. You can't do that under the open meeting law unless you declare a meeting. However, one or two of you at the time, and if you have an interest, contact me. I'm working with the owner of the property and advising her as to the finishing off of the work there. So I can arrange for a visit for anybody that wants to walk through there and see, for instance, chain link fence totally around, six-foot chain link fence around all of these arrays. And you were talking about the effect on the wildlife, the deer, and we see the tracks all through there and how they are manipulating or attempting to manipulate the chain link fences and turkeys and whatever else, if that's important. You know, I don't say that it is or isn't. If you could get them out of my yard, I'd be happy with it.
You had a great day, and I found it very effective, actually.
I think that if you're trying to visualize what this might look like, it's right up the road, and you can see it.
Yeah.
You can be a call, and I can arrange for a visit for anybody who wants to do that.
All right, thank you.
There's also the solar farm off of Alexander Road and Lumber Street. Some of the board members are newer, but you can drive by there and see how it looks in people's homes and, does not look good.
Actually walked that one about six months ago.
Oh, again? Yeah.
Yeah, no, after it was built, yeah.
It's not a bad idea to see. Yes, sir.
I just have one last thing. We've heard today that the halt has been, you know, in meetings and that the Conservation Commission, the Conservation Board has had meetings and that there's this trail meeting that will subsequently be happening. It just seems, the first notice I got was about this happening.
This one, yeah.
It was last week, okay? And all these happenings have been going on, and I'm a director of butter, and I don't think that, I'd just like to know how we can get this understood so that if these meetings are being called, if the public is allowed, we have an opportunity to hear what's going on.
It is, it is a little bit arduous sometimes, but we do work really hard to, first of all, it's the law that you have access to the meetings and notice to them. But it is also largely a responsibility to pay attention to when the meetings are coming up and so forth. Does the CONCON put anybody on a list to notify them of meetings, do you know?
Yeah, they have basically the same notification process as the planning board.
So you can, for the major boards, most of them do it now, you can get on the notifications so that you'll get an email, you'll get notified. And at each meeting, just so you know, for this process, as part of the public hearing process, we'll continue this meeting to a date and time certain, right? So it won't happen, you'll know tonight if you stay for the, you know, when we continue it, when the next hearing will be. So if you are in a, if you begin to attend, you should feel, find that same thing is happening, that you are here, the date and time certain, when the next hearing is going to be. Yes?
One more thing, there's members of Halt here, and I think that it's a private organization. You probably want to get on their email list.
So, through the chair, just to clarify another thing, the CONCON was just an RDA, and you might not need to notify Butters for that because there's no, it's not work.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Our Conservation Commission application is a full notice of intent, and the same notifications went out of the same list, so I don't know.
Yeah, so for a notice of intent, you need to notify Butters. For an RDA, I don't believe you have to.
We've got an RDA. Yeah, we've got an RDA back in December, and now we're through the notice of intent process. We had our first meeting last Tuesday.
And that notice went out to all Butters?
Yes, same Butters process, yeah.
We have a
Hold on, hold on. Yes?
We do have a Google folder on the Planning Board website, and all the documents for this project will be in the same folder, so when new documents are added, you just look for the newest document.
Just a process related question, which I think that was the intent of here. But related to that whole thing, can part of the process be to suggest to the applicants to contact the neighbors? Because, again, as they just said, I'm 72 Franklin Road, and if they had actually just come in and made some, like, the whole West Nurseries redevelopment, they had neighborhood meetings. It wasn't always effective, but they at least made an attempt to meet with the neighbors and actually reached out. There has been zero on this. I got one notice of saying that there was an upcoming development because of the Conservation Commission. I don't remember ever getting one for this. So the notification process, to me, that would be a part of the process, would be to add that, the feedback from the planning board to the applicant, have you reached out to neighbors if this is a significant project? Because that makes a huge difference as opposed to being blindsided.
So two things I want to say, and I think I know if somebody wants to say something. We can check and make sure that the Butters list included you. You can go to the CONCON, you can go to the Planning Board and make sure, okay? And that would, you know, that would be important to know. And then the other thing is, we always, always, always encourage, but cannot mandate, but always encourage applicants to do a lot of outreach with the neighbors, particularly with a project that is potentially changing and disruptive to people. Yes, sir.
And through you, Madam Chair, so we would certainly be happy to meet with you Butters. It's not our intent to blindside anybody. We've done some of our homework before coming officially before this board and before the Conservation Commission, and I think that's the right thing to do. So we met with private organizations and public entities at open meetings that didn't require notice, but the intent was not to do anything behind closed doors or in secrecy from the neighbors. I've worked with Seaboard Solar on probably almost a dozen projects now. I can tell you that from among my private clientele, they are one of the most responsive in terms of their willingness to have conversations, have meetings with neighbors. So we're certainly open to that if they're, you know, email communications, face-to-face meetings, whatever, whatever the neighbors are interested, however much they'd like to be involved, they have questions, we encourage them to reach out to us. We'll be here after the meeting concludes, happy to speak to them, happy to provide them with my card, and again, engage in that dialogue outside of the meetings themselves.
Perfect. So I really appreciate that. Hockington is traditionally a very engaged and involved community, which is awesome. And what the advocate's attorney was just saying is that there is, they are intending to be very intentional about outreach and connecting with Butters and neighbors and surrounding property owners. So take advantage of getting the information to get in contact with these gentlemen and take full advantage of that opportunity to interact and find out more about what's going on. Is there anybody else who would like to add anything to the agenda at this time? Yes, sir.
Just one.
You can't do it from there, yeah. I apologize, you have to be up here. So the folks at home who are rapidly watching this.
The, has Ashland, which is, you know, sort of lots, probably many of our neighbors are friends or Ashland folks who use the trails and are using that area, although they may not be, they're not part of this process, are we taking into account, like, any sort of bipartisan kind of Ashland influence on this meeting?
So I can say that there isn't to date. I'm sure that Ashland has its own process, and I'm also sure that either town would welcome feedback from nearby residents. I mean, we would certainly be open to hearing from people if they had concerns, but I don't know that there's an existing process for that.
I can say through you, Madam Chair, that the statute, which requires the 300-foot notice to Butters and Butters to Butters within that radius, not only includes residents of the community in which the project is proposed, but also any neighboring communities that might be within the radius, we're also required to provide notice to abutting communities' planning boards. And so we fulfill those obligations, so anybody that would fall within the radius that happens to live over the border in the town of Ashland would have received notice of tonight's meeting and of the Conservation Commission proceedings as well.
Appreciate that. Old civics lesson.
Just, but there's no permitting requirement for Ashland as far as this?
Not that we know of.
I do see some Ashland residents on the Butters list, though. They would have been notified.
And just briefly through you, Madam Chair, one more point of information, Nick had mentioned it a bit earlier, is that the portion of the site that is in Ashland was submitted to the Planning Board in Ashland for purposes of an ANR endorsement so as to separate it from the remainder of the site. So that process did occur already?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. What is the will of the board? Should we jump into the more detailed discussion or continue till when a bigger portion of the information can be in front of us?
I just, I don't know. For me, it's actually really helpful to have been on the sidewalk before we get into the details here. As I look at what's up in terms of pedestrian and traffic flow, emergency vehicle access and use of stormwater management, all these kinds of topics are, become much more relevant for me when I can see the site. That's just my preference. I realize we've got a lot of people here, and you can make an argument that we continue to move forward, but in some cases...
I do have some general comments that I'd like to make.
Sure.
If that's okay for now. So is there a, I didn't see it in there, but showing the outline of the lot lines? How many lots is it going to be that you guys are dividing this up to? And how many lots is it going to be that you guys are dividing this up to?
So there's no subdivision proposed with this application. We had the A&R back in December, which was endorsed by the Planning Board and also by the Ashland Planning Board. But we have three lots, technically four lots. There's two in Ashland, one's a non-buildable parcel in this corner here, just so we could create a buildable lot. So there's two tiny little lots in Ashland that were on the A&R. One's 0.01 acres, one's 1.83 acres. And then we have what I'm calling Lot 1. All the way to the driveway.
Okay.
And then up, that's the large parcel. That's about the 69-acre parcel where the solar development's proposed. Then we have the remaining 15.8 acres, which is Lot 2. Here, which will contain the existing former Liberty Mutual.
And that's already been subdivided?
Correct.
I think I remember.
Both Planning Boards, and it's been endorsed in December.
Thank you. See, the second thing I had was, so this is just a comment, one of our... So I haven't looked at the plan totally, but as far as utilities, there's no above-ground utilities, I'm assuming, because you didn't apply for any waivers?
So all the internal utility connections, all the wires connecting the array, everything is home run to this... I'll shut on the plane. To this battery station, this main equipment area where the proposed batteries are located. We're still coordinating with the utility on their final interconnection design, but they're going to be coming up the side of the existing driveway. That will likely be above ground as required by the utility with a few additional utility poles. That's to make their interconnection. But all the interior electrical conduit and cables will all be underground. We're still working on final clarification on how to cross the gas pipeline area. So we may need to come up and over and back down if they don't allow us to go underground through that area. We likely have one bank of conduit coming through this area right through here. We've requested comment from the utility. Pushing forward on trying to get some answers from them. As you probably are aware, they're difficult to get answers from.
Yeah, if you figure out how, you let us know.
Even though we are working with a resource for the electrical interconnection permit, the gas side of their business is totally different and they don't talk to each other. So it's a difficult process, but we started the dialogue process with them, made formal requests on how they would like us to handle that portion. They have the upcoming work, maybe they could, we're possibly going to inquire if they could install some conduit duct banks for us as part of their work, whether it be below their new pipeline or above that, still to be determined. But we would need a waiver at that.
Yeah, I didn't want to go too much into the details. I just wanted to do high-level discussion or else I'll get in trouble for this. But thank you for that. But just some comments from, we just went through this with a solar on Wilson Street. And they were not able to go underneath the gas pipes, so they had to have overland wires. And so for any overland wires with utility poles, you'll need a waiver for that. Correct me if I misspeak. The second thing is that same exact solar application, they were told the same thing by the utility that, you know, in order to connect, we needed some overland wire and telephone poles. And we pushed back on it and they were able to work out with the utility company that they were able to put those underground all the way, including if they had to go across the street. So we would...
With the exception of the pipe?
Yeah.
The pipeline?
Right.
There's no road here. There's no street that crossing.
So the power lines are on that side? Okay, regardless. So whatever you can do to not have any unnecessary above-ground utilities would be very helpful. That's the main point I wanted to make with that.
If I may, just also add on to that, I think with Wood Street, they were able to knock it down to one above-ground pole.
Wood Street, okay, yes, yes.
The utilities were on the same side of the street. So they did underground up until that one utility pole.
Yeah, they were able to reduce it a lot. Yes, thank you. And then number three, open space, you mentioned, and people have talked about it. So that's, to us, that's not really officially open space as far as the town is concerned because that's kind of like a different entity. We have real official open space that when we do a typical housing development, there's an open space development and that town gets, that land gets donated to either the town or a private company like Halt or something. Is that something you guys would consider doing for this project?
Yes, that's exactly what I consider for the project. We're not, they were not required, but that was the purpose since the very beginning.
Okay, just to be, through the chair, just to be clear, though. It sounded like you guys wanted to retain the property and just put easements on it. Okay.
Yeah, we're now, we honestly don't care if we retain the property and have a CR. We don't care if we donate the property. We work at the preference of the town and Halt. So whatever you guys think is better, we will pursue that way.
Great.
That would be working down through the trails.
Hold on one second, go ahead.
Through the chair, I think that conversation would happen when we talk about the trails.
As far as donating land to the town?
Yes.
To me, that would be a couple of different things.
And the open space.
Yeah, there's two places where that is. We'll have to, I'll have to look at that on the outline. And just talk about it once, maybe, but it'll impact both, right?
And just to be clear, Madam Chair, so I think that there have been maybe two discussions and I want to be sure that they're separated. So substantial portions of the site were contemplating potentially donating those, so they're no longer in our ownership or control. There may be other areas of the site which currently have trails that we may try to preserve. But those areas, because of their proximity to the actual solar facility itself, may need to be retained. We may need to maintain control even though there may be trail access. Those areas wouldn't be donated, but that wouldn't be the bulk of the open space. The bulk of the open space is proposed for donation.
That's great, thank you. In fact, that kind of like spurred something in my mind that maybe we should treat solar farms the same way we treat housing developments. Require some open space to be, you know, something that Zach can look at perhaps.
You know, we can talk about.
Thank you. And my final is just a quick note because there's a lot of discussion on trails. And I just want to let people know that there's a website called OpenStreetMap.org, which shows all the trails in Hopkinton. So there's a lot of people in town. It's like a Wikipedia where it's self-authored. So there's a lot of, I believe maybe that map came from maybe OpenStreetMap or something like that, but it's pretty close to that. So you can see the trails on this property and around it.
Okay, so let me just suggest that we're going to continue. And, but if anybody has, I appreciate the big picture points. So if anybody has any other big picture thoughts before we continue the hearing?
Is there any, through the chair, is there any assessment of the... We're talking about clearcutting 28 acres of forest. We debate cutting down four trees in somebody's yard. Like, what?
Well, we can when it's within the right of way on a scenic road. So that's some of the difference. So the, we walk, you know, it's a difficult path we walk with, what we've found walking with solar farms is that property owners are entitled to cut down their trees, whether they put solar panels in or not. We hope that they won't cut down their trees and we'd like to encourage people not to clearcut. We'd much rather have solar panels on already deforested property. But we don't necessarily have the authority to determine that. We don't have the authority to determine that.
Okay.
All right. When does it make sense to continue? Do you know our next... Our next meeting doesn't have much on it, but that's close.
February 10th.
Might be, is that too soon, probably? Yeah. So when, what are you, what are you hoping, what date are you hoping for?
February 24th is very full.
Very, yes. 24th is very full, if I can suggest that. So the 9th or the 23rd in March?
The 9th.
The 9th? And is there a decision deadline as well?
The special permit is 90 days after the public hearing.
90 days, okay.
And for stormwater, it is February 18th, so that would need a continuation.
So we would suggest, if we're meeting on the 9th, that that stormwater is, the decision is continued to the 16th? Give us a week after that, that hearing? That's typically our process?
That's fine, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right. I will entertain a motion to continue the public hearings to March 9th and the decision for the stormwater permit to March 16th. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Chair, there was an updated public hearing agenda that we've been discussing for the better part of an hour now. Is that something that will be available publicly after tonight's meeting? Once it's typed up?
Yes. I mean, I'm sure I'm not the only one taking notes, but we'll definitely...
So I put together a meeting materials memo. It's basically this whole thing. And I usually do it on Thursdays and make it available through, it's kind of a complicated thing. If you do, go through the Planning Board's website. There's a link to the Planning Board documents. That brings you to a Google Drive. It's in there. Also, if you go to the town calendar, I posted onto the meeting, I never can get, what is it called? The meeting?
Calendar.
Calendar item. It has the agenda and it has a link to the memo. So it'll be in that updated memo for the 9th.
Okay.
Hey, guys. Guys, can we exit before we chat? Thank you.
Do you anticipate that something that'll be ready? I mean, our next meeting now is not for, what, about six weeks? March 9th? So that's maybe it'll be ready sooner than a week prior to the meeting.
Hey, folks, we still have a meeting going on, so can you please continue your conversations outside? Thank you. Sorry.
I can put all this together in writing and send it over to you.
I appreciate that. We just wanted to be sure we're prepared to address everything that might be raised. Thank you.
I assume you're taking notes as well?
Yes, we have.
I'll draft a list and send it out to the board. You guys can add things, then we can send it to you.
Perfect, thank you so much, yes. We want you to have that. 9? It's the decision on the stormwater, it's, yeah.
Just a deadline that we extend it.
Yes, sir.
Is there someplace where I can put my letter?
Yeah, you can give it right to us. Yep, indeed.
Would it be possible for you to email that to... It might be easier to include if it's emailed as opposed to...
Yeah, that's actually a good idea. You can give us the paper, but if you email it, it's easier to include.
You probably need some paper.
I will do that.
Okay.
I can scan it.
John, scan it. Oh, yeah, he can just scan it in. Thank you.
I'll do that.
Sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Are we, are we ready to adjourn?
I was hoping you'd say that.
Business at any time.
What is it?
Well, for the business at any time, just a couple of comments.
Sure, business at any time, Amy, you're not making any friends here in this campaign season.
For next time, for the Legacy Farms North traffic light status, could we just put the...
I'm sorry, there's still a little ambient noise, so if you could...
Okay. Gentlemen? Gentlemen?
Kicking you out.
For the Legacy Farms North traffic light status, could we just put the deadline date for that and the same for the sidewalks? Sidewalks, and just in the bottom of the agenda each time so that we know.
Yeah, just to give an update on those, I talked to Roy today. The traffic light, we think, has now been agreed upon by Beta and the town and VHB. So that should be buttoned up in the next few days. And then they'll put it out to bid and order everything. And we'll see what the deadline is with that. The sidewalk, so this is how it was explained to me. They had done the guardrail and then they encountered issues with Concom. So they went before Concom to clear up those issues. And now they are withholding, holding off on any more construction because they're concerned that if they open it up and then we get more snow or more rain, they won't be able to finish it by the marathon. So they want to basically wait until after the marathon to complete that sidewalk project.
I'm thinking we're starting to get some closure on things. So with the traffic light, with the bus stop.
Yes.
The approval of the road.
And the rock wall that's falling apart at the intersection of Legacy Farms North.
Yes, it is.
West Main is getting fixed hopefully soon. He called a Mason, they haven't called him back. So now if they don't, he doesn't hear back from him, he's going to get it from Mason.
The way they do that is they cheat and they put cement behind it so you can't see it.
Is he current on his payments?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
It might just be like a Legacy Farms group, you know, thing, just keep riding those deadlines until we really start to see them ramping up.
Members of the public ask me, I know, all the time. I'm sure they ask how.
Me too, yep, yep.
Just an agenda question. So do we currently have no public hearings for the next meeting?
Correct.
Can it be used for the public hearing for the... Nope.
No, we don't have enough time to notice it.
I had a feeling that was the case.
Can it be used, not be used?
Should we schedule the public hearing then for zoning?
Kobe and I are going to work on that this week and get it, get it scheduled for the 24th.
What is on the agenda, just administrative items?
Nothing so far.
Can we really skip it?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. I'm proposing. I'm making a proposal.
That's the easy, that's the easy...
I would personally hold off and see if we get any kind of administrative items. Maybe it'll be a quick one, but I don't want to cancel it now and then have something come up and have to move it to a different one.
Especially considering the next meeting is very full.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we are on the hunt for annual town meeting too. Oh, hey, make a little notice to remember to vote on Monday, February 3rd.
February 3rd.
Special town election. If I, I'm forever forgetting.
What's it?
Special town election for the articles from the special town meeting that are money articles.
It's both legal and schools?
It is, I think it's entirely for schools.
Yep, those three items for temporary.
And then we'll get to go to the polls again because they didn't want to wait a month. I just have lots of feelings about that and opinions, but anyway, okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So votes?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
No.
I'm sorry, I wanted to ask Gary a quick question because you mentioned in a previous meeting that the solar, the laws were already in place about brown areas getting more credit. I thought that's something that the government was working on in the process of.
So I met with Carolyn Dyke, gosh, probably a year and a half ago.
Yeah, and I saw, I was on that email that she sent out.
And she had commented that the current Massachusetts incentives do provide more financial resources for brown sites.
Let's you and I try to find that online if we can. I'll take a look and I'd be interested to see what the difference is between.
Yeah, and my understanding is that there's also a lot of, you know, there's a certain, that as more gets built out, that the incentives go down for any given town as well so that those early developments actually have more financial reimbursement. There's a lot of, that was my understanding, was that there's a lot of variables that go into those comparisons on the financial.
I think it's SFRACs, right? Because I get SFRACs for my solar panel. But anyway, one of our people, I just wanted to... So we need to, you need to have a vote for that.
All those in favor in time?
Aye. Opposed, any abstentions?